And we will start, as we often do, always do, with our consent calendar this evening. That consists of the minutes of the June 2nd, 2020 city council meeting. And unless there are changes, I would recommend entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Councilor Belts.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Silvernagle. Moved in second at all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and any opposed? Thank you very much. For my mayor's report this evening, I will keep this fairly brief because we do have a lot of folks to hear from. But just to let you know, we have been on, I think several of us have been on calls with the League of Oregon Cities and learning a lot more about potential aid to come to cities and states through the coronavirus funding. And hopefully, we will be hearing more about that as time comes. And we have an opportunity as a council to advocate for that through our legislative and through our lobbyists, the League of Oregon Cities, and so I want to be talking to you about that. Also, and steal a little bit of Chad's thunder here, but, and we have a caller who's not muted. Joe? Joe?
I don't think it's Joe. There's a little, there's a C that's lighting up. That is the caller you're right, so they need to mute.
Yes. Linda Hillis, some of your little things lighting up. I believe that. Thanks. We, we applied for a. Well, who else needs to mute?
Lyle and Angie Gilbert. I don't have the power to mute.
Yep, yep. And I ask folks, are you sure you are muted?
Caller one and caller two don't appear to be muted.
Right. Or Phyllis, can you mute them?
There we go.
Ah, thank you, Phyllis. We had applied to the state for some grant money that would be used as a match for the economic development funding we had set aside for local businesses. Our economic development funding would be in the form of a loan, and the matching funds from the state would be in the form of the grant. And I think Chad let us know at the last meeting that the application for that funding we had put in, in conjunction with Independence. So we went together to put our grant request into the state. And we, we did receive, not quite as much as we had hoped, in that funding. But we were going to split that with Independence. And they were, they had put 100,000 of their money in, and we had put in 60,000 of our funding. And so we were going to prorate the, the grant money we received from the state. Yesterday, Independence let us know that they have decided to actually just split the funding with us 50/50. So very generous of them, very helpful to our businesses. We really appreciate their partnership in that. And I just want to thank them for the work, for Suzanne and Chad for the work they did on that, and then their partnership with Independence. The other thing, we're partnering with the City of Independence. I mentioned in our community letter that Mayor McCardle and I are working on a community roundtable. We have met on that yesterday, and we have sort of identified a, some folks that we will invite to be at the table for us to really discuss the current condition of a variety of things that affect community livability in Monmouth and Independence, and, and looking at them through a lens of equity and justice. Western Oregon University will be hosting this roundtable and helping facilitate that. And the mayor and I should be able to release more information on that in the next couple of days. But I want everyone to know that that work has been going on. And it, again, is a very important partnership with Independence as we determine how we move together forward to really listen, to learn, and to do, to be ready to actually take actions to improve the lives of our community. So I wanted to report on that as well. And other than that, I will turn to reports of the council representatives of boards and commissions. And I see Councilor Belts, you have something for us?
I do. I attended virtually the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments Board of Directors meeting just several hours ago. And the, the important thing of note is that they have also, they lost their executive director a number of months ago. We had put the, the search for a new executive director on pause. We are moving forward now, and we've selected a firm. And people that are on the selection committee, myself being one of them, we've been contacted by the search firm, and we'll be doing interviews very similar to our city manager interviews in terms of what, what are we looking for? What is the community about? And so council, if there are things that you believe should be something that the, the new executive director of the COG should exemplify, shoot me back an email, please, and let me know. Or if you need to send them all through Phyllis, that's fine, too. Just let me know. My, my interview with the consultant is Friday. So let me know if you have thoughts on the executive director between now and then. Thank you. That's all.
Any other boards, commissions, meeting? John Carey.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the, this is more of an alert to the, an upcoming planning commission meeting. That will be held tomorrow, tomorrow evening, 7:00 PM. And, and it may be of interest to not only councilors, but the community. There's going to be a design review on a, sort of a transition of the gas station downtown across from the fitness center, that there's going to be a plan put together where that's sort of a fruit pub type thing with food carts arranged around the perimeter of it. Somewhere, although not as large in scope or scale, to the, to the, to the yard in Salem, if anybody's familiar with that. It's a fun deal, fun concept. And there's a design review that will be considered tomorrow, again, 7:00 PM. And it's virtual as, as this one is. But anyway, that might be of interest. That concludes me.
Great, thanks, John. It's great news. Any other reports? All right.
Hi, I'm Mayor Coates.
Oh, oh, sorry, couldn't see you there. You're not all on my screen with all these other callers, so I didn't. Yes, please.
So we met virtually, the Parks and Recreation Committee met. And really, there was one item of business. We had some extra money from the, the Parks Grant Fund. And so the, the, the board decided that they would ask Suzanne to look to investing that into one of the light displays for this coming Christmas. So that was the main item of business, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilor Schinkel. That's awesome. All right, so seeing.
Madam Mayor.
Others, yes.
Um, Councilor Lopez here. And while the MINAP Board has not, has not met since the last council meeting, we will be meeting Thursday, the 25th, and are, are going to be conducting a virtual meeting similar to, similar to the, the virtual council meetings.
Right, thank you. Feels, feels like things are picking up again a little bit, right? Usually summers when we slow down and don't have as many meetings, but it'd be nice to have a few of these, so. I will turn to Chad Olson, our interim city manager, for a brief update from him.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. So just a couple of things in general, and then you'll notice there's two reports. One is the status report, and the second is a, an update and looking for direction from the city council regarding the five-year economic development strategic plan for the city. So COVID-related, the city did receive the grant agreement for our coronavirus relief fund application. That total was $113,511. And thank you very much to Janet, our finance director, for the work she put in for that. So that, I think, will be sent off this week sometime, signed. And so it looks like our application was approved in the full amount. So I am pleased to report that. And second, the library announced that in a limited in-house service, they'll hopefully open up beginning July 6th. And the, the only caveat with that is, of course, with the pause that the governor put into effect, whole county was not able to go into phase two. And I was trying to time the library's opening to at least the county being in phase two. So there's, as with a lot of things COVID-related, there's still uncertainty surrounding that. But other than that, everybody has kind of found the, the rhythm to how we're doing. And I'm glad to see that we did have a good turnout tonight. And we have proper physical distancing, and masks are being worn. And we have a good turnout. We're able to use the GoToMeeting platform. So kind of the fingers crossed will be when we take public comments using the GoToMeeting platform, but hopefully that will work out. And the Public Works did open up some of the park facilities. So there's really very little direction that we've received from the state in terms of opening the play equipment and the shelters. The bathrooms were to be cleaned at least twice a day. We're not able to meet some minimum requirements right now. But we are opening them with signage, basically saying that they're not being sanitized twice, you know, twice a day, and that the equipment and the shelters can be used at their, at the public's own risk. So, but we're, we are making an effort to move in that direction. A couple other things. So the Public Works remodel is substantially complete, and there should be a walkthrough next week with the city council. If you're interested in coming out, we're going to stage that to keep groups to a minimum. But Russ will have the walkthroughs starting next week. And let's see, we're currently, of course, tonight on the agenda is the economic development strategic plan. So hopefully, that will be the kickoff to that. The finance director and Suzanne and myself are finishing the, the urban renewal five-year, five-year plan. So that should be finished this week with a look towards the first meeting in July for the agency to re-review that, make changes to it or modifications as they see fit. And the last thing I'll mention is that the League of Oregon Cities has sent out their survey to all of the, the communities regarding their legislative priorities. So over the next week or two, Phyllis will send those out to the council. You can go through and rate your priorities and submit them back. And we will then boil it down to the top four or five priorities from the council. And Phyllis told me that the council has been diligent in doing that in the past. So we're, we're going to make sure that that happens. It's not due until August, so we'll get a early start. Okay, so the first thing is the economic development strategic plan. So there's a outline in the council packet that talks to that. So just the background for the audience, since we have such a good turnout, is in February, when the council had their goal-setting session, and they went through their prioritization of activities they would like to pursue in fiscal year '21, one of those was the economic development, and specifically to develop a five-year economic development strategic plan. So Suzanne and I have gone through, we've reviewed other strategic plans to see what is common, what we would typically find in those type of plans. And I included the description of what the, so backing up just a little bit, the description outlines kind of generally what we, what the council and staff will be working towards. And I'll just point out the four, four main areas to, to address include business retention and expansion, business recruitment, downtown development, and tourism. So. And the attachment, attachment one has the outline. So I guess I'll, I'll talk to that first, and then just to interrupt me if you have any questions, and then we'll pivot back to see how the council wants to use a work group and what the makeup of that would be. So when we did our review of other economic development plans, there was a, a number of common components that went, go into those plans. And I listed them out in attachment one, and they include a vision statement, mission, mission statement, statement of values, a, the goals, priorities, strategies, initiatives, and then performance metrics or performance measures. So those would be pretty common for any strategic plan or development plan that you would be looking at. But those across the, you know, half dozen that we looked at, that was, those components were common to each of those. So specifically, I put that, the outline out to see if, with the council, if there's other elements that you think should go into a economic development plan that we didn't address. So, you know, we can get feedback, whether it's at the, this meeting, or you can send, you can send comments to me offline. The second thing that the, we were looking at is what type of work group the council would like to use to, to address and, and develop the economic development plan. So there were three specifically that I've seen used in the past, in the past three groups. The city council could do it, external stakeholders could do it, or staff could do it, or a combination of those three. In my experience, the most common, the most common work group is a combination of the three. So you would have perhaps the, some city council members, and it can be anything less than a quorum, would be my recommendation. So one to three council members, external stakeholders, which in our case would include the Monmouth Business Association, Chamber of Commerce, local builders, developers, local business owners on Main Street, and, and so on. So what we're shooting for is to have a cross-representation of business interests in town to sit on what I'm describing as a, an ad hoc committee. So an ad hoc committee would be of limited duration. They would be organized by the council at a meeting. And after their completion, they would submit a report to the council and be finished. And then the group would disband. So with that.
And John Carey, just so you know, I still have the document that we created the last time we had this discussion as a council. And you and I actually formed a small council work group. And we started thinking through that stakeholders group, and I still have that. So I've, I've given that to Chad. And if that is the way we would like to go, I think we identified at the time some names that are still valid of folks who would probably have some really good input for us. If council would like to just give that as general direction, and then identify a couple of us who are interested in working on that, we could maybe have a meeting with Chad and kind of come back with a more detailed recommendation to the rest of the group.
So would that be? Be, so what I was thinking is that we, and we could do that. But the direction in order to keep things moving would be to assume the council, if you're interested in the, the combined option, that we would then go out and begin to solicit names, you know, like what the mayor's describing, and come back to the council at the, I think it's the July 7th meeting with, with names for the council to appoint.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. If, if that's the way we want to go, and a couple of folks want to volunteer, then start working on gathering that, some, some names. Exactly. Thoughts about the structure of an economic development sort of advisory board or council? Staff only, us only, community members? Roxanne? And then John?
Oh, I definitely like the idea of all three groups represented. That just makes the most sense. A, a good cross-section, and I'm more than happy to help, so thanks.
John Carey, then Chris Lopez.
Madam Mayor, I, you know, I, I agree that the, with Councilor Belts, I think the combination of, because people come from, from, you know, really all kinds of different areas and interests. And so to, to be able to pull them from all, I think clearly we need to have staff there. We need to have council, because that, that's where some of the funding will come from on this. But we need to have input from those that are, that are on sort of the front line. And I'm anticipating that it won't, there won't be unanimity on any of that, but that's fine. And I, and, and to Chad's suggested outline, I, I think that's good. I think that, and it flows normally. I'm not surprised that there are, because consultants often work on these. You know, I'm not, we may truncate some of this a bit and be able to combine some vision statement, mission statement, statement of values. Those typically, while they're unique, they do kind of meld together and, and lose a bit of their punch. So maybe we could do some merging there, but I think the outline is good, so I would support all of that.
And Councilor Lopez?
Um, I'll, I'll just echo the, the sentiments regarding the makeup of the advisory board. And in the sake of brevity, leave it at that regarding the board. I will say that I, I believe that a well-executed and followed vision statement, mission statements, and statement of values are valuable, unique, unique points. And where, where they lose their teeth is if they are not clear, concise, digestible, and acted upon. So if we are going to draft them, they need to be lived by. Otherwise, I would agree with John that maybe we just combine that.
And is anybody else interested in working on this? Particularly at this first juncture, getting together with Chad and starting to vet some potential partners, community partners in the effort? John?
You know, I, I would leave it to you to, to do the appointing. However, I'm, I would be willing to, to be involved with this. I think there is some value to having some degree of connection to the planning commission. And I sort of at the moment am the bridge between the council and the planning commission. So there, there may be some value to that. But I would leave that to you, Madam Mayor.
All right. I'll let others think it over if you want to have a piece of it. But like Chad said, just a couple of us, I think, to get started is helpful. Make those connections and start working towards developing that plan with our, our really valuable community partners. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the second item is just a quick update regarding the COVID business loan program. There's a couple pages in the council packet that talk to that. And I'll turn this over to Suzanne. She's the one who's working most closely with the, with the program.
Great, and I'll keep my comments brief here. But good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Just a couple of updates on the business loan program. Cease had mentioned the good news about Independence splitting the Business Oregon Grant Award Funds 50/50 with us. So that's, that's awesome. Increases the number of grants that we can make here, and loans we can make here in Monmouth. So as you'll recall, this is a loan program to help small businesses in Monmouth that have struggled with the, the COVID-19 pandemic and some of the health measures that affected their business. It's actually also open to nonprofits as well. But it's not open to businesses that have already received federal funding. So we're trying to catch the ones that have kind of slipped through the cracks. And since we didn't get the whole 60,000 amount that we were hoping for Monmouth alone, we do have some funds left over in that economic development loan fund that we can still administer and make small business loans from. So this, there's a table in your staff report packet that provides some criteria for making those loans and compares that with the Business Oregon 50/50 grant loan program. So just wanted to make sure folks have that information that we were planning to use as we move forward. The city's loan program is 100% low-interest loan, so there's not a forgivable grant portion. But they are more of the microloan amount, so we'll be able to help more businesses with that. And the award amounts are from $2,000 to $5,000 with a favorable 1.5% interest loan rate. So happy to be able to offer that to our businesses. Let me see if there's anything else that I could point out about that. In terms of rolling this out, unfortunately, the award process has taken a little bit longer with Business Oregon than we were hoping for, getting these funds out in early June. And now that we're targeting that first weekend, July, we've actually been able to open up the application process. So coming soon, we're going to be starting our outreach to the targeted businesses that we're trying to reach, or the women-owned businesses, sole proprietors, and minority-owned businesses. So we'll start that, we're anticipating next week. And we have materials that are translated into Spanish in various languages. So we'll be able to share that widely with the community. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have about that.
So I, and I have a quick question. That application, do we envision that being online? Or there'll be a paper application or both?
We are, we're working through those details. As I pointed out in previous meetings, the council of governments, since they have a small business loan program, will actually be administering the loans for the cities of Monmouth and Independence. The, the path that we are trying to finalize now is that there would be an initial kind of screening where they would just fill out the business or nonprofit a simple questionnaire online to make sure that they're eligible. And then once we determine that they're eligible, then they would have to provide a little bit of additional financial information and, and the paperwork to sign. So yeah, trying to make it as painless on these busy businesses as possible.
Other questions about this program? All right. I can't, don't think I can see any here. Okay, thank you, Suzanne. That's great. Finally getting closer to that. It's getting a little bit frustrating. Takes a lot.
That's, we knew it would.
There are two, multiple governments, right? We are at the portion of our meeting for a citizen. We are at the portion of our meeting for citizen comments and so I will remind everyone that we do have a protocol for that. That this is the time reserved for comments from the community. And if you wish to speak, those folks here in the room have completed a comment card. Speakers' comments in this forum are limited to three minutes, but the council welcomes additional information in writing. And for those who have called in, if you would like to identify yourself as someone who would like to make a public comment, please type in the chat, which hopefully you can bring up with the little chat bubble in the upper right of your screen. And if you type that to myself, then I'll be able to call on you or to Phyllis Bowman and we'll have her call on you. You don't need to type to everyone your name. But if you can type your name in that chat section and what you'd like to speak on, that would be helpful. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the council to review an issue. However, the mayor or councillors may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses your comment. And if you'd also then let us know if you want follow up information, we will try to do that. So really appreciate everyone taking time to attend this meeting of Monmouth City Council, those here in the room and also those online. We have a couple of comments that were submitted in advance to be read into the record. And so I'm going to ask Phyllis Bowman to read those to us now. So first of all, I'd like to know if Mary Hughes is here because she was wanting to come to the meeting and I will let her read her own if she's here. Okay. Letter from Mary Hughes. The police budget for Monmouth City is a huge portion of the city's budget. Last year, this was approximately 2.5 million or 37.5% of Monmouth City's overall budget. Looking at recent past and future projected police budgets for the city, it seems to have average annual increases of $100,000, which in itself is outrageous. On one hand, there is a huge police budget for Monmouth. On the other hand, there is a huge need in Monmouth for more community based and social programs such as youth and job job training and education, mental health issues, drug addiction, housing, poverty, just to mention a few. We need more community outreach and social programs, not more police, especially now with so many residents adversely affected by COVID-19. Question one, why can you not help the people of Monmouth more instead of the of the police of Monmouth? Two, why can't you reallocate some of the proposed police funding to more directly help and impact the residents of this city? Three, who decides on how to spend and divide up the city's budget? I would like this subject plus the above three questions to be a matter of serious discussion with the mayor and city council as soon as possible and for the result results of said discussion to be made public and accessible. Thank you, resident Mary Hughes, resident and property owner of Monmouth. There is a short one from Taylor Clark. Hello, I have two questions for the police chief Talon regarding the police department. What use of force policies does the Monmouth Police Department utilize? And is it possible to make that information available online for our community to access? And two, what specific training and resources are the Monmouth Police Department utilizing to identify and rectify the racial bias that inherently influences white police officers? Thank you for serving our community and thank you for your time. The last one is a bit longer, so bear with me. This is a letter from Karen Ross. Dear Mayor Coontz, City Council and Police Chief Talon, as you know, our country is at a crossroads. Due to unfortunate circumstances, we now have an increased opportunity to make our small city an even better community where every individual, regardless of race, ethnicity or gender, can be treated equally and fairly. I believe we are positioned to make that happen with your thoughtful leadership and input from our others in our community. I am pleased that you already have a plan to talk with the police chief about police policies and to talk about race issues in our community. I have utmost respect for our police chief. At the same time, I also believe we need to reexamine our practices and continue to get better in all of our city departments to eliminate race inequities. My request to you include, review the police policies and ensure that they do not allow undue force and that they protect civil rights, report to the community the revised policies, invite people from all races to talk with you and to give you an opportunity to listen and learn from their experiences in our community, use this information to help guide the revision of the police use of force policies, develop strategies with community partners to help address and alleviate community issues that unnecessarily involve police activities such as mental health issues, homelessness and substance abuse issues. Routinely share information on officers using force and have a diverse community committee that reviews cases and publicly reports on the findings. Publish enforcement data by demographics regularly. There is a pledge for mayors to take to add to address police use of force policies. Mayor Coontz, please review and take the pledge. It can be found at obama.org backslash mayor dash pledge. Continue to learn about and understand your own biases and racist thoughts, actions and how they affect others. This is especially important for you as community leaders. One book I am currently reading that is thought provoking is White Fragility, Why Is It So Hard For White People To Talk About Racism by Robin D'Angelo. The next one on my list to read is How To Be An Anti-Racist by Ibaam Kendi. My personal passion is all children and families thriving in healthy communities. Having spent my professional life working with not for profit social services organizations, I know the difficulty of combating community issues. However, I also believe we can be successful and have seen many positive improvements for people when listening to their needs and standing beside them as they as they move forward. I appreciate your work and commitment to our community. Thank you for your willingness to take on the good work. If we include people of color in the process, we will make positive progress. Please let me know how I can support you in this worthwhile endeavor. Thank you, Karen Ross, community member. And that's all the letters. Thank you, Phyllis, very much. We have some speakers here and I'm going to, I don't see anybody in the chat yet, so we'll keep an eye on that. We do have one in the chat. Melody Melanie Hampton wanted to speak. Okay.
Madam, uh, Ma- Madam Mayor, um, a point of information. Will we also be entertaining question questions from the community during the work session?
Not specifically. We'll see if we'll let the chief make the presentation. I I think a lot of the questions that we've received, both those in public comment and then additional, I I hope we're going to be able to try to address because the chief got a lot of these in advance. So hopefully we'll be able to answer most of the questions by the presentation. And then we'll see what what questions those leaves. This is just a beginning conversation. This isn't going to answer everything and we know that and we're prepared to continue to take input on this situation. So that's that's hopefully going to be a good opportunity to get started tonight. I do, I'm I'm actually going to, Lane Shetterly is our city attorney. And Lane, I'm going to ask you, I have one, I have several comments here that appear to be on an issue of that that appear to be potentially zoning or issues that might come into question about the city code. They're related to some density issues and specific to a a development on Berkeley Lane. And hit your speakers. There you go. I I just want, before we entertain their their comments, I'm I always am nervous about this. If it's an issue that might come before the planning commission and potentially to the city council, that we would not be allowed to hear comments in this forum. Is, am I correct on that or am I overly cautious?
You are correct, Madam Mayor. And I will, the state land use program and our own development code is a very specific process for handling public testimony relative to land use applications. In this case, we're talking about, I think Suzanne, it's a site design review. Is that what it is? And and yeah, Suzanne, could you confirm the nature of the application that is going to be before the planning commission?
Yeah, so it's a site plan review. Yes.
Yeah. And that i- in the event of an appeal, that's appealable to the city council?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Folks who want to speak on that, I'm going to ask you to direct your comments to the planning commission hearing process. Again, we have a very specific process for handling those kinds of applications. And the city council is the ultimate decider of an appeal that would be coming from the planning commission. That appeal is to be decided by the planning, by the city council. If it comes to the city council based on the record developed in the application and before the planning commission. Public testimony tonight is outside the record of the application and really is not appropriate for the city council to hear. It's analogous to stopping, well, I should say that in a in an appeal like that, the city council is sitting in what we call a quasi judicial capacity. Actually, it's not a policymaking body. It's actually deciding a case based on the facts that are presented in an application and also based on testimony and exhibits presented at a hearing. And so testimony in a setting like tonight is really kind of like stopping the judge on the street corner and and having a conversation with him or her about a case that would be becoming in front of the judge and offering testimony outside of the context of the hearing. So I'm going to ask folks who have, who want to speak on the issue of the site design review that will be coming before the planning commission to save your comments tonight. The appropriate place to direct those comments is to the planning commission. If the case, if the application is appealed to the city council, then there will be a public hearing in the appropriate forum and conducted according to the development code and according to state law, at which you will have the opportunity to testify. It's just not appropriate to do that tonight and getting ahead of the process.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's I always get nervous on those and I think I did read that correctly. So I will, I will call your names and if you have anything else you'd like to comment on other than specifically related to that site review, you'd be welcome to come up to the microphone, Gary Cheek. So anything other than that issue?
Well, notwithstanding the planning commissioner's comment, I'm Gary Cheek.
We'll have you sit down.
You can, you can use a wipe if you if you want to.
He's he's actually our city attorney. He's not the planning commission member. We, so we aren't the planning commission. They aren't.
He's online. And my question is
No, John, John.
The conditions of the PUD met.
John, so so we don't have any members of the planning commission here. John Kerry is our council liaison to the planning commission, but he is not a a planning commissioner and Lane Shetterly is is our city attorney. So anything regarding that particular application or that site review?
I'll ask you.
We we aren't actually able to answer you because we aren't, we aren't knowledgeable about the case or about those particular flaws at this point. I'm sorry. And that's why he mentioned that it has to be, we have to hear the testimony at a meeting that has been noticed to include that after the planning commission. John, did you, Carrie?
Madam Mayor, I I just, I want to make certain that the that the caller is aware of that process. If if he could be contacted directly prior to that, if it's, I I it may be on the agenda for tomorrow night, but if not, I would like if the, if we could make certain that the caller and anybody else that has an issue or has a question on this, that they get direct contact of when that meeting is and and rather than just say there's a meeting coming and then hopefully they can catch it. I think we need to be proactive on this.
Suzanne, when is that, when is that, when is that hearing?
Suzanne's checking the calendar.
Okay.
A meeting on
I just would like to ask a question in preparation for that meeting. I need to know if all the conditions were met.
That's the meet, that the planning commission will, you'll be able to ask that question there. July 1st will be the planning commission meeting that is scheduled to be on the agenda for that meeting. And so that meeting again will have a public element. It it always does. And anybody with questions or concerns will be able to listen into that meeting. Is that the actual hearing Suzanne?
So procedurally, it's a type one decision. So we did a pre notification, a 14 day comment period where folks could get their comments in before the decisions made and that those comments will come up to the planning commission at that meeting at July 1st. So be attached to that.
Okay. So any additional comments or concerns about that either on the call or here will be at that meeting will be an opportunity. I'll call others, however, if you had additional things you wanted. No, thanks, Nan. I'm going to go by the speaker cards I have here. Christina Britton, did you have anything else you wanted to comment on? Lynn Smothers.
And I was going to be agreeing with everybody else.
And Christine McKee.
My comments were in directly with the developers.
Okay. And Cheryl. Okay. And then Nan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, council, for a few moments tonight. I know you're very busy. You'll find that a number of us are in the room tonight and also on chat, not because we object to this particular plan that's going before the commission tomorrow night as part of step one. Actually, the people around me
Just a minute. I'm going to ask Lane if there's any concern about speaking in general.
Yeah, I I do have concern. And Suzanne, you know better the posture of this, but I I really, the the city council doesn't have, they don't have this case. It's not in front of the city council. It's not appropriate for the city council to make a decision tonight to offer advice. The council may be sitting as an appeal body later in the process. And I want to preserve the council's appropriate role for that time and 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 not have this process sort of get ahead of itself with testimony about the application, about the proceeding before the council tonight.
Sorry, Nan.
Mister Mister Shetterly, just a quick question. What is, if letters have been sent to Suzanne and the council on any particular subjects, if they have to do even tangentially with this particular triplex which is supported, would they be read into the record? Yes or no?
Suzanne, do you want to answer that?
You can come here, Suzanne.
I thought, I thought you were on here.
Take it into the meeting, yeah.
Okay, um, sorry. What was the, the question was about the, um, sorry, you restate the question.
Lane, what did
Letters that have been submitted will be entered into the record.
Oh, yes. So they will be attached to the staff report that goes to the planning commission, which is available one week before the meeting and will be posted on the city's website.
Okay, thank you. And is there any, um, any help that you can give on how citizens can ask for the help of the council and the planning committee or commission without having to use the land use appeals board?
No, the the land use process is the means by which an application like this is considered and decided. That is the process.
And there's no objection to the application. How can a citizen speak about something other than the application next door to the application?
application? It has nothing to do with the application going forward. Has nothing to do with it. Everyone in this room supports a triplex as designed, as submitted, not a problem.
Even that, you're getting into testimony about an application.
Yeah, Nan.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Sorry.
Well, I'm asking for help from my council.
Yes.
And I would expect to respond.
And we mentioned the appropriate time when we hold a hearing about it. That is absolutely.
Contact Suzanne if you have questions about how to get into the process.
Yep. Yep. There is a, there is a piece where if it comes to council, we absolutely will take testimony at that time, but, yep.
I just like to warm the record saying not everyone's for it.
So, okay. So please don't make any additional comments. It really could actually, anybody then can challenge the whole process up, unfortunately. If, if the process isn't followed, then we are legally putting the entire thing at risk because this is a very well-defined Oregon state planning laws are pretty particular about this stuff.
We are able to speak at the planning commission or no, at the July meeting?
There's always a public comment section.
Where we could, we could verbally discuss, or is it just going to be our letters?
I was going to consult with Lane on that typically. It's just a 14 day pre-comment period that we gave to neighbor, notice to neighbors individually 250 days before the process. So I can consult with Lane and see if it would be appropriate to take oral testimony. Normally, that's not part of the type one.
Because we would definitely prefer.
So, so the, the questions to Suzanne would be the, she'll have information in, and calling her in her office would be the appropriate place. She's our city staff person who will take care of this. She'll get the appropriate advice and then be able to give everybody the information, obviously a little better if you have one or two spokespeople that she can work with.
Madam Mayor, there may be another question. Do you want to come forward to the?
Yeah. I have, I have a couple of other, yeah, folks to speak about other things. Yep.
I'm going to bring you to how this works. I am Christina Britton, 1148 to Berkeley Lane East. So you're telling us that July 1st, which the meeting is, the planning commission is not a public hearing? Is that it?
I'm saying it's a public meeting where all the public is allowed to attend. The, this type one site plan review process, it does not normally have a public hearing component. The public input process is through written comments, which it was explained on the notice that went out. And we received quite a few comments. I think we may have received one from you, actually. Yeah, so, yeah, so like I said, I will consult with Lane to see if there's an alternate way to run that hearing that wouldn't run askew of our, the laws that were required to follow in our code for that process.
What's, what's type one?
Yeah, sorry, speaking planner speech.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but so the planning commission meets tomorrow and you could, you could, I'm sure it's done by go to a meeting?
So, so the plant, it's not on the agenda tomorrow night. So it's the same issue.
Understood, but, but there's, if there's planning commission meeting tomorrow night and you wanted to make public comments, I'm sure that there's public comments.
It'd be outside of the public review process before it's.
I guess what I'm trying to get to is this, so unfortunately, for whatever reason, this is not, well, I know why it's not, but it's not the correct forum for, for these questions.
Yeah, no, I get it.
It needs to, so all of the questions that you have regarding this application or the process would be better done instead of with the council, either at the meeting or contact Suzanne outside of, outside of the meeting. But this is, this is just not the correct forum for, for the questions. And Lane, the city attorney, has at length tried to explain that this just isn't proper.
No, I don't want to know, I don't want to discuss that. I want to know the process, what happens and would you say something one?
Type one.
Type one. So type one is we're going to be just making public comments, just like it is now on July 1st? Just in general, and then we're never going to have a public hearing about this.
So the, the type one process is a written comment, public participation. So the public has 14 days, as it was explained on the public notice, to submit written comments, which we did receive a number of comments that will go forward to the planning commission and be attached to that staff report. It's not, the code does not define an oral comment, public hearing process at the planning commission meeting. But the public is absolutely invited and allowed, it's a public meeting, to attend that on July 1st. But it, I will need to confirm with the attorney on whether or not that's something that we can amend our process to take oral testimony that evening. So, and, and just to clarify with Chad, you were saying we do have a planning commission meeting tomorrow night, but it's the same issue. We're not able to take comment outside of the normal.
I understand that.
Okay. Just want to make sure people weren't confused.
No, but if, if all of the concern in this room right now is regarding planning issues, it would either be better to contact Suzanne outside of this meeting to talk to her offline. Or if you have some other issues that you want to take up to the planning commission, you can always go up and talk to them about any questions you have. That being said, if there's a specific application, which is what Susannah said, that's going to be held in July, that's the meeting that you should attend. It's just the council is unable to.
No, and I, I get, I get the council. I get that right now. I'm thinking we're all interested in, you know, we've written letters, so that's going to be given to them on July 1st. July 1st, they're going to do whatever, but it's not a public comment time to discuss that issue. That's what you're telling us.
Correct. That's the way the.
So at what point, if they make whatever decision they're making or whatever, at what point do you get to like have a discussion? Like have a, a hearing where you would hear from the public?
Yeah. If it is appealed to the council, then that would be a public hearing.
So would that be something that they would then on July 1st say, gosh, you know, I guess we're going to need to have a public hearing on this?
Um, no, the, the code again defines it as a written public comment period.
And who would appeal that? So that's the question. If the planning commission makes a decision and somebody or somebody else doesn't agree with the planning commission process, then how is that appeal process?
Yeah, so how does that work? So after the planning commission makes a decision, we, the city, I will send out written notice of that decision to everybody that provided written public comments. And on that, it'll have a date that starts the 12 day appeal period that folks can submit a formal appeal to the decision. And so anybody that has provided written public comments during that, the, the comment period has what we call standing, can, can be that, an appeal to that decision. So anybody that provided public comment could appeal it to the council.
Who provided public written comments already?
Already, yes.
Yes, because we've ended the original comment period.
We're still only doing written things, not being able to specifically talk about it. Is that the idea?
Yeah, the idea with the different types of planning applications, a type one, you're, the city is just applying very black and white criteria. Is it met? Does it meet the parking spaces? Does it meet the setback requirements?
Yeah.
And if it's met, then it's approved. So those decisions go through less of a public hearings process, review process, whereas larger decisions, like the subdivision decision or zone change, those have a lot of discretion on how those decisions are made. And so those have the, the public hearing component as well. So it's just.
And Suzanne, I think you said, but I just want to confirm that in the event of an appeal to the city council, that is conducted as a public hearing.
Okay, so, so what you're saying then is if whatever the, the comments at that point, then we or somebody can request a public hearing with the city council? Is that it?
You can appeal the decision of the.
So we write letters in that 12 minute, 12 day comment period after the July 1st meeting and I say, gosh, you know, I really would like to appeal this, then that's the forum that this would come into an actual public hearing. Is that the idea?
Correct.
I think that that, does that help everybody to know what the process is? Okay.
And that's when you can address the city council, just not tonight.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah. There's, yeah, more questions.
All right. We do have a couple of other speakers this evening and so I will invite Allison Benson. There she is. And if you could please state your city of residence, your name and your city of residence for the record.
My name is Allison Benson. I live in Monmouth. For the record, thank you all. I appreciate the time to speak. Myself and the Black Lives Matter Community Vigil Planning Committee would like to extend a formal invitation to all the Monmouths to be council members, the mayor of Monmouth, the police chief of Monmouth, as well as the entire police department of Monmouth as community members in plain clothes, such as the Independence Police Department has committed to be, to the Black Lives Matter Community Vigil at the Independence River View Park this Saturday, June 20th, from 6:30 to 9:30 PM. We would love to have you all in attendance to show your support, hear the testimony and stand in solidarity with your community and the Black Lives Matter movement. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. And Antonia.
Roxanne has her hand up.
State, state your name and city of residence, please, for the record.
Your honor, one quick question before we move on.
Sorry, you'll have to say it again, it was muted.
Sorry, Roxanne, go ahead. I was muted.
I, I was unable to hear the name of the park that the previous speaker mentioned.
In Independence River View Park this Saturday evening from 9:30 or 6:30 PM to 9:30 PM.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
So I'm Antonia, my, I reside in Independence. I work for the Towne School District for Towne Middle School right now. But I am here to encourage council members and city officials to release a public statement that endorses the Black Lives Matter movement. After reading the shared document that was released, we noticed strategic language was used to make that statement not be included. This movement was not created to discredit or devalue other identities, but to bring attention to the structural and systemic injustices and racism that exists with, in our larger societies. And I'd like to read an excerpt from the letter that was written by the Black Student Union at Western. In 1856, Western Oregon University, as Monmouth University, was founded. A few years later, in 1859, the beautiful territory in the Pacific Northwest became the state of Oregon. In our state constitution, it was directly declared that black people were not allowed to live, work, own property, or vote in the state. Oregon is the only state with this origin. We pride ourselves for our unique things like gas pumping, voting by mail, and refusing to use umbrellas for some reason, but we rarely talk about our longest and most dearly held tradition, anti-blackness. Our university was found, founded in a state where black people weren't allowed, meaning our university was founded with black people not allowed here. Do you wonder why we don't feel safe? People who claim to be Oregon natives with the proud ancestry of people from the Oregon Trail not only erase the indigenous populations who have been here since time immemorial, but indirectly celebrate the exclusion of black people. Do you wonder why we don't feel seen? In the 1920s, the Ku Klux Klan of Oregon peaked with 20,000 members, enough to house our average on-campus resident populations 20 times, enough to represent our entire student body 3.2 times, enough to fill both Monmouth and Independence. When our city leaders can be ready to endorse this movement, we can begin the conversations of what it will truly take to make our black community members feel safe, heard, and seen. Myself and community members are available to talk further and provide resources on this topic, and we welcome further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. I will let you know that Joe Hahn has volunteered to be on the round table and he will be representing some Western in that regard, I believe. So thank you for your comments. Any additional comments in the chat then, Phyllis? Any? No, the lady that wanted to speak in the chat was for the issue that we can't talk about. Okay. Yeah, okay. Uh, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Very much appreciate going through that. Sometimes it's a little hard to have to say that the rules just are, and with, with state land use planning, that is one in which we have a very different role than we do with many of these other issues. I will go ahead then and move on to our business agenda. We have a couple of discussion items here. Our first is the, unfortunately, is to accept some resignations from our, some of our amazing volunteers who work very hard, and I'm sorry to see these folks leave us, and we'll be reaching out to them to thank them for their service. But we do, you were sent a list of boards and commissioners who were willing to serve and be reappointed to another term. And I will go ahead and we'll, we'll sort of deal with that first. We do have another app, current application to approve, but the reappointments that were requested were Donna Cable on planning commission, Patty Dixon, planning, Stephen Howard, planning, John Oberst, planning, and Maggie Triplet on planning, as well as Patrick Olson for senior advisory board, and Cape on the senior advisory board, and Michael Kissel on the traffic safety commission. Is there any discussion or it would entertain a motion for the reappointments?
I, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved to reappoint the listed applicants to their respective boards and commissions and to appoint Susan Farley to the Arts and Culture Commission.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez, for the motion, and Counselor Belts for the second. That is to make those reappointments. And then also, we do have the application from Susan Farley from the Arts and Culture Commission, and you received that. So thank you for pending that nomination. And unless there's any discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? All right. Well, they're not going to get out of it this easily. We, we got them back. We do have many vacancies now, however, so I do want to let folks know that we will be looking to recruit four members to serve on our budget committee. That process will begin again next January. Seems hard to believe, but it is. Our historic commission has one opening. The library board has two openings. Parks and Recreation could use an additional volunteer. Our senior advisory board is now down five members. So we are looking for folks to serve for five positions on the senior advisory board. We have two openings on traffic safety and two openings on our tree advisory board. So we are looking for volunteers and we greatly appreciate those willing to serve and hope we can find some others who have interests in these areas. So, thank you. We have a first reading tonight of an ordinance, and I will bring that up. This is in our issue relating to the zone change, right, right here around the corner. We've had an extensive process and, and hearings to make those changes. And I'll have Suzanne give us a brief update about that.
Okay, thank you for that. Yes, so this is ordinance 1392, an ordinance to adopt comprehensive plan amendments and zone change 20-01. This was for the Ron Wilson Center property on the corner of Monmouth Avenue and Clay Streets. As you recall, the council had a public hearing on June 2nd to consider the application and voted at the end of that hearing to approve the amendment. It would change the comprehensive plan map from high density residential to commercial and change the zoning from Main Street or from, excuse me, High.
from Main Street, or from, excuse me, high-density residential to Main Street District for about a half acre property. So then ordinance has been prepared for first reading to formally adopt that change and update our zoning and comprehensive plan maps. Council has two alternatives before you tonight. You can go ahead and conduct first reading of the ordinance or take no action on it. So if there's any further questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, so I'll entertain any questions. And seeing none, I will conduct the first reading of ordinance number 1392, an ordinance amending the Monmouth Comprehensive Plan designation for a certain parcel of real property located at 155 Clay Street West and 211 Monmouth Avenue South. Assessor map number 8525 AD, tax lot 787901, from high-density residential to commercial, and amending the Monmouth zoning map designation for said parcel from high-density residential to Main Street District MS. First reading conducted. Thank you. And that will come back to us for a second reading and adoption. All right, speaking of adoption, we now have a review of the water rates that we have discussed sort of at length throughout the budget process and recently, and is Russ going to take this?
No, Janet will do that.
Janet Shinnard.
So just before Janet starts, I do want to apologize to the council. So my, as I mentioned last time, my background does not, hasn't included doing resolutions for rate adjustments separate from the budget resolution, so I do appreciate John, Counselor Carey bringing that up and then pivoted back over. I did talk to Lane, and so we put it back on the agenda for this meeting for those two resolutions, but again, before Janet starts, I wanted to apologize to the council for that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members, and interim city manager Olson for that lead-in. Saves me from having to do it, which I appreciate. So we are looking at, as you know, through the budget process, a water rate increase 5% for this fiscal, this coming fiscal budget year. As you know, we last approved a rate increase two years ago in June of 2018, and as the staff report indicates, we had a Gallardi Consultants do a review of our water rates and determine that, in fact, continuous small, well, relatively small rate increases for the future would serve us better to reserve, to have appropriate fiscal reserves, as well as to do the very necessary capital construction work that we need to do and to keep pace with inflation for our operational costs. As such, we are recommending a 5% rate increase, and what that results in is approximately $2.35 per month per average household in this case. If we, so I am bringing forward to you to approve the, the attached rate increase resolution. That is your first alternative, or you may choose to instruct a modified rate increase, and we can modify the resolution accordingly. Or if you, you may choose to not approve the rate resolution, however, that will either a different lower rate or no rate increase at all will result in the need to cut, do some budget adjustments and budget cuts for this fiscal year. And with that, I would take questions.
Any questions? John, Carrie.
The staff report recommended, or indicated, that that, that they would, were recommending subsequent increases similar to this one. I just want to confirm that, that this is a this, when this resolution passes, this will be a one-year rate increase. Any subsequent rate increases will be dealt with contemporaneously.
That is a true statement. This is only for fiscal 2021.
Right, okay.
They've teed up the next few years of recommendations, but that, the resolution 1905 literally gives the dollar value of what the increase would be, which is the one-year reflection of the 5%.
And, and then just one quick follow-up. My, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, but did Gallardi have some additional refinements that they were going to make prior to submitting a final report, or did, or was that final? One, and then two, what's the progress on the Water Master Plan? There's a driving for amount of this.
So I'll step in, Counselor Carey, to answer that. Russ is on the line if I don't get it right. So Russ is currently reviewing the Water Master Plan update, and that should be available for, I'm hoping, the next council work session, perhaps the one after that, but it's currently in review. As far as Gallardi's rate plan, so I, as I mentioned earlier during my report, I'm developing the five-year urban renewal. It's the capital improvement plan, and part of that will include water projects that may not have been included in the rate calculation, so we are ensuring that those are as, as much urban renewal dollars that we can put towards water projects. We're, we're doing that. That would reflect potentially in offsetting some of the rate increases. I'm not sure that it would be sufficient to be of any, be substantive, but that is currently under review, so you probably will see some adjustments made with, in the final report.
Okay, other questions? Have some options there for a motion I would entertain.
I move approval of resolution number 1905, establishing new rates for water service and repealing resolution number 1868.
Thank you, Counselor Belts, and a second?
With Schinkler.
Schinkel, thank you, Counselor Schinkel. Right, and of course, the repeal is because we had one that set old rates, and we got to legally wipe that off the books, so. A resolution establishing new rates for water service repealing resolution 1868. Any further discussion? Then we'll have the roll call. Please, Phyllis.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Sharmer.
No.
Counselor Belts.
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that resolution passes, and we have another one, again, something that was discussed during our budget process, and something that, again, we've been able to hold off on some rate increases for quite some time for Power and Light, in fact, giving rebates in years past, so I will let Janet explain and remind us about the resolution to review our electric rates at this time.
Thank you again. So the staff report outlines that for the Power and Light Fund, we will also be looking at a 5% rate increase for fiscal 2021. We don't have a projection at this time as to what future rate increases will look like. We are going to be conducting a rate study in fiscal 2021 to hopefully allow us to plan for the future in a similar way to what we've been doing for the water fund, such that we continue to maintain healthy reserves, but also fund the operations and the capital equipment and capital purchases that are needed to, capital projects that are needed to make this a healthy and vibrant fund. And so this, this rate increase, although it is a 5% rate increase over the last increase in 2017, a reminder, as the mayor pointed out, we did have two rate decreases over the previous tenure period, so if you look back to 2009, when the rates were $10.43, going up now to $10.83 for your basic charge is, is actually only 3.68% over the rate it was over 10 years ago. So as such, it seems like a reasonable time to be doing this, given the price increases that we're seeing for power purchasing. However, that's staff's recommendation, and so you have a choice of approving that or directing us, once again, to either modify the resolution or not approving the rate resolution, and I will take questions.
John? Counselor Lopez?
Um, I, I don't have a question so much as a, as a thank you to staff. The historical context of those rate increases was something that, at least for me, wasn't fully illuminated before through the budgeting process and is very helpful. Thank you.
Great, thanks. John, Carrie?
And I would echo Counselor Lopez's comments. This, more than any other utility rate that we have, has been about as nimble as you can get. We've been up at times, and we've been, we've decreased rates at times. At, at, at times where it would have been quiet enough to just let that, let the prior rate increase slide right on through, but because of leadership and expertise in that department, the recommendation was to roll the price back. So that is the historical context, which validates request for an increase.
Hey, thank you, John. Other comments or motion? John?
Madam Mayor, I approve, I move approval of resolution number 1906, setting rate charges for electrical utility service and repealing resolution number 1869.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Byron, thank you, Counselor Schinkel for the second, moved and seconded. And seeing, Chris, do you have a question or comment? No, that's the pointing at the chin. Okay, thank you. Seeing no other comments, Phyllis' roll call, please, on resolution number 1906.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yeah.
Counselor Sharmer?
No.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Belts?
Aye.
Counselor Silberdangle?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries, and we have adopted resolution number 1906, and we'll be looking forward to the rate study on that to go forward, so. Thank you very much, everybody. I think what we're going to do, I, I will take a moment here if there are any announcements or counselor comments, and then we'll take a short break before the chief starts his presentation and we begin our work session. Any announcements or general comments? Darren Silbernagle.
I got one quick one. Just learned just before our meeting tonight that there'll be 125-pound boxes of food available to those that want to come by. It looks like about 3:30, 4 o'clock on Thursday, we'll have some information pushed out to Facebook and, and emails and stuff, but those that could benefit from that, we've done a couple already. This will be the third one, and so it's this Thursday. We'll have, it looks like, 100 boxes, so that's more for the public, of course.
And where will those be available for pickup, Counselor?
They will be at St. Patrick's Church in Independence.
Great, thanks. Yeah, there's a lot of great opportunities right now. The Ella Kern Food Bank is, has a lot of this fresh produce and fresh food is coming in to the food bank system, and because our food bank is not open every day of the week, they do have days in which they are encouraging folks who in need to come by and get that distribution of food. It's easy. They make it safe, and we really thank them and our local church partners for making these boxes available during this time. It's, it's a great service. Counselor Belts?
Something I wanted to add about the food banks, all of the food banks also have acted as a de facto face-covering distribution, and so anybody that has face coverings that they've made, masks, any of the food banks are happy to have those donated so that they can then give them out to people that come that don't have them.
Thank you for being one of the people who is sowing and providing for face masks, Counselor Belts. All right, seeing no other comments, I'm going to take a break until 8:10 by the clock here. Is that about right? Yep, eight minutes, and we will resume in our work session, which, again, will continue to be recorded. Everyone can stay on the line. We're just going to take a little break and change our setup here in the room. Thank you. I would like to call to order the Monmouth City Council work session for this evening, and Phyllis, do you need to do a new roll call, or do you see everybody there? We're still here.
I can see everybody. Cease.
Perfect. Thank you very much. This evening, we do have one item of business on our business agenda, and this work session is something that, again, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, is in part of our ongoing sort of discussion about how the city of Monmouth is responding and reviewing ourselves, examining our practice, examining our policies, and educating ourselves on the, a lot of information about the police department. We, we've never really asked, right? We know a lot about the work they do, particularly in the area of community policing. We may not be very good at telling that story sometimes, but there's always more to learn, and I appreciate the counselors who have submitted questions in advance. As I said, we've gotten a lot of other questions. Myself, the chief, individually, we've been in communication to try to answer those. So what I'd like to do tonight is, is hear the presentation, and hopefully that will answer a lot of the questions. I, at that point, I guess we can take maybe some public comment, and if folks want to make comment on things they've heard, I probably won't engage in a back and forth, just as we don't in public comment during our regular business meeting, but we will take additional points of information so that we can continue this conversation. At that, I will certainly introduce Chief Talon and his technical advisory staff here, who's going to help with this presentation. So thank you, chief.
Thank you very much, Mayor Kuntz and members of the council. I appreciate this opportunity tonight to talk briefly about Monmouth Police Department operations, including some specifics about policy and procedures. Before I get started, I want to recognize every member of the Monmouth Police Department for their professionalism, dedication, and compassion that they exhibit every day as they serve all members of the Monmouth community. They are all hard-working police officers who strive to listen, serve, and improve. Tonight, I have members of my supervisory staff here, as the mayor mentioned. They wanted to be here tonight just to show their dedication and willingness to listen during these important times, and also to answer any questions that you might have at the end of my presentation. And as the mayor said, it would be very appreciative if I could get through the presentation, because it's likely I'll be able to- the presentation because it's likely I'll be able to, uh, answer many of your questions with the presentation. But if there is any questions at the end, uh, from the council, I'd, I'd be glad to, to take those questions. And so with that, um, I have received some questions by email over the last two weeks, some of which were also shared with the mayor and the council. And, uh, I, I've kind of, uh, developed this presentation and designed it in order to inform our community and address those, uh, specific questions that have come in. So I wanted to start out just with, uh, our commitment to our community. So the Monmouth Police Department, we require all employees to follow a set of written policies that are based on current case law, federal law, state law and best practices. We hold all of our officers accountable to these policies by providing constant and consistent supervision and oversight. All of our staff members receive an annual performance evaluation. We take action when needed to address and correct any policy violations or employee misconduct. We require all officers to attend and participate in up-to-date and ongoing training. We follow careful and deliberate hiring and selection process in order to ensure that we hire high quality individuals. We communicate with our officers by holding in-person roll call briefing three times a day during shift changes. We regularly participate in community events, which gives us the ability to interact and to listen to our community members. And we all understand the importance of our jobs and we strive to improve every day. So I'm gonna focus first on some policies. And just to give you a little bit of background, um, the LexiPo policy system is, is the system that we subscribe to in Monmouth. Monmouth PD subscribes to LexiPo policy manual system. We are one of over 8,000 agencies using LexiPo policies. LexiPo provides fully developed state-specific policies researched and written by subject matter experts and vetted by attorneys. LexiPo derives its content from federal law, state law and best practices. Agencies are able to modify these policies to fit their department and community if needed, and they are able to add agency-specific content. LexiPo keeps us up to date by constantly reviewing federal and state laws, regulations, national standards and best practices, and they forward updated policies to us on a regular basis. So as we all know, the policy manuals are living documents and they require constant attention in order to stay current. And so for an agency our size, um, we have a number of policies and it's, uh, it's a chore, but it's something that we have to do to constantly stay current. So having this subscription and being able to, to, uh, receive these policies and then to, uh, adopt them is something that's very helpful in our community. In the following slides, uh, you're going to see some examples of a few of our current policies. And under the headers, you're gonna see in small little tabs, uh, the words state, federal, best practice, modified, or agency content. And that's just to kind of show you, I have a couple of them in there that way, because that's the way they come when I receive them. And that's what tells me where they're deriving the content from. And then I'm able to look through those and if any modifications need to be made in order to make those fit for our department in our community, I can do that. So beginning with, uh, one of the questions that we're receiving tonight and, and that we got online from some people was, uh, concerning our use of force policy. And this obviously is not the entire policy, but, uh, it does briefly give you an overview of our use of force where it says, uh, and you see here, uh, under the, the 300.3 use of force comes from federal guidelines. Officers shall use only that amount of force that reasonably appears necessary, given the facts and circumstances perceived by the officer at the time of the event to accomplish a legitimate law enforcement purpose. Reasonableness of force will be judged from the perspective of a reasonable officer on the scene at the time of the incident. Any evaluation of reasonableness must allow for the fact that officers are often forced to make split-second decisions about the amount of force that reasonably appears necessary in a particular situation with limited information and in circumstances that are tense, uncertain and rapidly evolving. Given that no policy can realistically predict every possible situation an officer might encounter, officers are entrusted to use well-reasoned discretion in determining the appropriate use of force in each incident. And again, that comes from the federal guidelines and that's actually derived from Supreme Court case law since 1989. Use of force reporting, which is a part of our use of force policy, is also best practice, best practice, and then some modifications in there. Any use of force by a member of this department shall be documented promptly, completely and accurately in an appropriate report, depending on the nature of the incident. The officer should articulate the factors perceived and why are he, why he or she believed the use of force was reasonable under the circumstances. If the force is employed in the course of effecting an arrest, overcoming resistance, or controlling a dangerous situation such as assault, appropriate criminal charges should be filed. Any officer involved in a use of force situation and any officer witnessing such action shall document the incident in the narrative portion of their police report. Police report documentation is required. So this is stating that we always, in every case, when a police officer takes a call for service, we write a report and this is just reiterating that during that call for service, if the use of force is initiated, we're going to indicate that in that police report. The next slide I'm gonna show you then goes on to say that an additional report, this is a report that's in addition to the main police report, is going to be required if these certain actions, uh, happen during the incident. If an officer discharges a firearm in the line of duty for other than training purposes, a death or injury has resulted or is alleged to have resulted to any person, when any weapon is used on a person, when force is applied without weapons above the physical contact standard, medical treatment is required or requested. The force used relates to a criminal charge irrespective of whether or not the incident results in an arrest or an officer points a firearm at another person. Again, those are things that are actions that will cause an additional use of force report, additional to the regular report that's going to be written for the incident. So along with that additional report, a notification to supervisors must be made. Supervisory notification shall be made as soon as practical following the application of force in any of the following circumstances. The application caused a visible injury, the application would lead a reasonable officer to conclude that the individual may have experienced more than momentary discomfort. The, the individual subjected to the force complained of injury or continuing pain. The individual indicates intent to pursue litigation or any application of the TASER or control device. Supervisors are notified immediately when those things occur. And so what do the supervisors do? They then shall review each use of force by any personnel within his or her command to ensure compliance with this policy and to address any training issues. Under training, officers will receive periodic training on this policy and demonstrate their knowledge and understanding of it. And then a use of force analysis is, is done at least annually. The lieutenant should prepare an analysis report on use of force incidents. The report should be submitted to the chief of police. The report should not contain the names of the officers, suspects or case numbers, but should include the identification of any trends in the use of force by members, any training needs and recommendations, any equipment needs recommendations, and any policy revision recommendations. So as you can see, there is a lot to our use of force reporting and, uh, our supervisors are reviewing that use of force. And then it's coming to me and I'm reviewing it and then we're doing an annual review. So, uh, we take it very seriously and we are on top of it and we are watching all the time when any force is used during any incident. So here's another question that has come up, uh, about whether or not officers have the duty to intercede. And in our policy, use of force policy, it says, any officer present and observing another officer using force that is clearly beyond that which is objectively reasonable under the circumstances shall, when in a position to do so, intercede to prevent the use of unreasonable force. An officer who observes another employee use force that exceeds the degree of force permitted by law should promptly report these observations to a supervisor. Another question that has come up is about the chokehold or the carotid control hold. And as you see here in our use of force policy, the Monmouth Police Department does not train on the carotid control hold, nor does it condone its use except in circumstances where deadly force would be justified. So for us, it's only as a last resort when there is no other option available for an officer in order to preserve their own life or to preserve the life of another would be the only time that would be used. Our conduct policy is quite extensive also, and this is just a quick, uh, paragraph within our conduct policy. The continued employment of every employee of this department shall be based on conduct that reasonably conforms to the guidelines set forth herein. Failure of any employee to meet the guidelines set forth in this policy, whether on duty or off duty, may cause, be cause for disciplinary action. An employee's off-duty conduct shall be governed by this policy to the extent that it is related to the acts that may materially affect or arise from the employee's ability to perform official duties or to the extent that it may be indicative of the unfitness for his or her position. We have a bias-based policing policy and this is a requirement, uh, from the state of Oregon. The policy states, the police department is committed to providing law enforcement services to the community with due regard for the racial, cultural, or other differences of those served. It is the policy of this department to provide law enforcement services and to enforce the law equally, fairly, objectively, and without discrimination toward any individual or group. Our member responsibilities within this policy say that every member of this department shall perform his duties in a fair and objective manner and is responsible for promptly reporting any suspected or known instances of bias-based policing to a supervisor. Members should, when reasonable to do so, once again intervene to prevent any bias-based actions by another member. Within that same policy, we also have stop data. And the state of Oregon just, uh, required this in the last, uh, I think two years ago, it be, they began requiring stop data to be collected. And this, the, uh, department sizes, uh, when they initiated this, the larger departments had to start doing this first and then medium sized and then smaller. We at the Monmouth Police Department were not actually mandated to start collecting stop data until, uh, this July 1st. However, uh, I'm proud to tell you that when I became the police chief 18 years ago, I actually implemented this, uh, in 2004. We began collecting stop data in 2004 for the purposes of if anyone were to come in and ask about that information or that data, I would have that available. I didn't have it professionally analyzed. I just had it available in the event anybody wanted to look at it. It was being transparent and, uh, anyone from the public could look at it if they wanted to. We now do this as a state mandate. As you can see here, each time an officer makes an officer-initiated traffic or pedestrian stop, the officer shall record the required stop data in the method and manner prescribed by the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission, and that's a statute. State reporting to Oregon Criminal Justice Commission, our record section shall provide the OCJC with traffic and pedestrian stop data annually as prescribed. Data may not include information that reveals the identity of any stopped individual or any officer. And that's all, that's also in the statute. And just so that you know, our officers, this is actually done in real time, right after the stops occur. We don't wait and then send that information as it says here to provide it to, um, the OCJC annually. Uh, we actually have an app. Each officer, uh, has a, an assigned cell phone that they carry and there's an app on that phone that, uh, when they complete a stop, they enter the information in. And, and just so that you know, that information includes the age of the person stopped, the perceived race, the reason for the stop, whether or not a search was conducted and whether or not any weapons were found during the search. They enter that data into the app on their phone and it's uploaded immediately to the OCJC. And they have that information on a daily basis from us. I also read, uh, received, uh, a question about the use of deadly physical force response plan, which as a council, you might remember, it came before you in 2008 when this Senate Bill 111 was passed. And then once again, back in 2017, when we made some minor changes to the Polk County Plan, we came before the council again to report on that plan. And what it says just in the preamble of this particular document is that Polk County law enforcement agencies recognize the importance to both their agencies and our communities to ensure that any intentional use of deadly physical force by a peace officer is investigated in a professional, competent and impartial manner. The openness with which we proceed in these investigations is critical to establishing and maintaining trust within the community. It is clear, our citizens examine closely the actions any law enforcement agency takes when their officers intentionally use deadly physical force. And it is our goal to ensure the community is confident and accepting of the actions Polk County law enforcement agencies take when involved in these situations. The purpose of this plan is not to set the standards for the use of such force or to be a substitute for agency policy regarding the use of force, but rather to provide a framework for a consistent response to an officer's use of deadly physical force that treats all people affected by the event fairly and promotes public confidence in the criminal justice system. So in that plan, the Polk County Plan, amongst other things, what it does is it outlines the fact that if someone within the Monmouth Police Department is involved in the use of deadly physical force, an outside, uh, agency will come in and become the lead investigator. It won't be our own. And that way we, we maintain the public trust and it's, uh, a professional investigation. And in our case, we've designated the Oregon State Police as our lead investigator. And if for some reason, the Oregon State Police is unable to do that, then a secondary police agency would come in, most likely Salem Police Department would be asked to come in and conduct that investigation. So we've been asked a little bit about our training. DP SST standards state that law enforcement basic, uh, training, whoop, I went too far, didn't I? Their annual, uh, law enforcement basic requirements for certification. This applies to those officers that, that hold a basic certification, an intermediate or an advanced certification. Their annual requirements are that they have at least eight hours of use of force, firearms training, and one hour of ethics training. The three-year requirement states that they must have two hours of mental health or crisis intervention training and then 84 hours of total training. If you hold a supervisory management or executive certificate, then 24 of those 84 hours must be in a leadership, uh, training class. Then we all has to, have to have first aid CPR. We have to hold those current certifications at all times. That's just the minimum standards. Most police agencies, including ours, do much more training than what the, those standards are. Yes. Right. That's not what, that, that's what Lieutenant Haynes just, just mentioned to me. It's not what's required in order to gain those certifications. These are just maintenance training after gaining certification. So at Monmouth Police Department, each officer is sent to the 40-hour crisis intervention training. We have most all of our officers through that training. We have a couple more to get through that, some of our newer officers. We have all officers attend verbal de-escalation training and we're current- We have all officers attend verbal de-escalation training, and we're currently right now going through another de-escalation training program, the online program. Officers have attended implicit bias, cultural diversity, and ethics training. Officers attend additional professional development courses in multiple disciplines and topics. And some of our officers are certified instructors in multiple disciplines. So we actually do quite a bit of training throughout the year, every year. We've had a few questions about making sure that we hire high-quality individuals. So our hiring practices and procedures include that nine-step process that you see there. We accept the applications. We go through the National Testing Network where officer or prospective officers have to take a written test. And according to DPSST, you must be able to pass 12th grade reading and writing standards. We also have them go through the Oregon Physical Abilities Test, which is also a requirement by DPSST in order to receive basic certification. Candidates then, once they go through those three areas, they then move into what we call a background pre-screening questionnaire. We call and talk to each one of these candidates and talk to them about their background and make sure that they are qualified and they don't have any what we call automatic disqualifiers that would not allow them to be a police officer. Those that get through that pre-screen, the top candidates are invited to an interview panel where we interview those candidates. And from that interview, we'll select one or two, depending on how many openings we have to move on to the full background phase. That, after that background is conducted, they then must go through a psychological testing and interview. They must then go through a medical exam, and then one more time they come back for an interview with the chief of police. So it's very extensive and really very difficult to get to that level in order to be hired as a police officer. These steps are all taken in order to ensure that we're hiring the best candidates possible. We have not, at Monmouth PD, we have not, and we will not lower our standards. The background is extensive and it involves talking to and obtaining information from all former employers, school and education-related history, friends, relatives, and neighbors. We look at driving records, criminal history, financial history, and any other history of reported past or current illegal drug use. We use a certified professional background investigator to conduct this background on all police officers and reserve officers applicants. All officers then, once they are hired, all officers must attend and graduate from the 16-week DPSST Academy. All officers must then complete a 16-week field training and evaluation program in which they are evaluated every single day that they work. New officers are on probation for the first 18 months of employment, and they can be let go for any unsatisfactory performance issues. This is an extensive process, and it ensures that we have the right people that are in this profession for the right reasons that meet the standards. Monmouth Police Department's culture is centered on the core values of commitment, respect, integrity, and service. It also is built on their fault on our, it is built on following our mission every day, which is to provide the highest quality of law enforcement services to every community member. So I have had some questions also from people about Campaign Zero or the hashtag #8Can'tWait. And so here's how the Monmouth Police policies compare to the current trends in #8Can'tWait. And I've gone over some of these with you, but I'll go over them quickly again. So number one, in the #8Can'tWait banning chokeholds and strangleholds. And once again, as I mentioned earlier, the Monmouth Police Department does not train on the carotid control hold, nor does it condone its use, except in circumstances where deadly force would be justified. Number two, require de-escalation. As I mentioned, all of our officers are sent to a 40-hour crisis intervention training. This training focuses on de-escalation with an emphasis on dealing with persons in crisis. Right now, Polk County has two crisis intervention teams that respond to our jurisdiction when available to assist on calls involving people in crisis. This is one of the things that we've been hearing concerns about is making sure that there is a qualified mental health professional assisting during these calls. And Polk County, we got ahead of the game, and we've had this for the past, I think, almost three years now, where we've had two teams that are working that serve the entire county that we can call upon if we have a situation of a person in a mental health crisis. This team comes in, it's either an officer or a deputy working alongside a qualified mental health professional, and they come directly to the call and assist us and in many times take over that call because they're, they have the expertise to do so. Further, requiring de-escalation, officers, you can see here, the number of points here, that officers should consider that taking no action or passively monitoring the situation be the, may be the most reasonable response to a mental health crisis. And without reading down through that whole entire thing there, you can see that there are several things that our officers train on and that they do at the scene of these situations in order to make sure that people are maintaining a calm and courteous situation and avoid overreacting. Responding officers generally should not use any stance or tactics that can be interpreted as aggressive. They need to allow others to interrupt or engage the person. They don't corner a person, cornering a person who is not believed to be armed or violent or suicidal. They don't argue or speak of the raised voice or use threats to obtain compliance. Number three, requiring a warning before shooting. Within our policy, you can see again, it's federal mandate, the use of deadly force is justified in the following circumstances. An officer may use deadly force to protect himself, herself, or others from what he or she reasonably believes would be an imminent threat of death or serious bodily injury. And then under B, you see here that officers may use deadly force to stop a fleeing subject when the officer has probable cause to believe that the person has committed or intends to commit a felony involving the infliction or threatened infliction of serious bodily injury or death, and the officer reasonably believes that there is imminent risk of serious bodily injury or death to any other person if the subject is not immediately apprehended. And under such circumstances, a verbal warning should precede the use of deadly force where feasible. I'd also want to point out that during our training, especially during training and range training, during defensive tactics training, or any confrontational simulation training, our officers are taught to always be giving verbal commands, always announcing their presence, announcing who they are, why they're there, and the fact that they, whatever it is that they want that particular person to do. So we're announcing to them and we're talking with them and we're giving them commands so that they understand that that it's a police officer and they know what we want them to do. Number four is requiring exhausting all alternatives before shooting. Again, under our use of force policy, officers shall use only that amount of force that reasonably appears necessary, given the facts and circumstances perceived by the officer at the time of the event to accomplish a legitimate law enforcement purpose. And at the bottom again, given that no policy can realistically predict every possible situation officer might encounter, officers are entrusted to use well reasoned discretion in determining the appropriate use of force in each incident. Again, the duty to intercede or intervene, I read that earlier, and you see that we have that in our policy 300.2.1. We do have the duty to intercede. And officers shall, when you use the word shall, it's not that they can determine if they want to or not. Shall means they will do so, and when they're in a position to do so, they're going to intervene and prevent the use of unreasonable force. They're also going to promptly report that to a supervisor. Shooting at or from moving vehicles. In our policy, we state that shots fired at or from a moving vehicle are rarely effective. Officers should move out of the path of an approaching vehicle instead of discharging their firearm at the vehicle or any of its occupants. An officer should only discharge a firearm at a moving vehicle or its occupants when the officer reasonably believes that there is no other reasonable means available to avert the threat of the vehicle or deadly force other than the vehicle is directed at the officer or others. An officer should only shoot from a moving vehicle when the officer believes there are no other reasonable means available to avert deadly force directed at the officer or others. Officers should not shoot any part of a vehicle in an attempt to disable the vehicle. Require use of force continuum. As you can see in here, under the factors for determining the reasonable use of force, there are 17 factors. These are all, have all been factors that the Supreme Court or Circuit Courts of Appeals, Federal Circuit Courts of Appeals, these are all part of court cases, and these come from the federal guidelines that we incorporate into our policy. We don't have a continuum, but we reference these guidelines in our use of force, and we use objectively reasonable, the objective reasonable standard, which is what's been set forth by the Supreme Court. And number eight, require comprehensive reporting. And I talked to you at length about the reporting during uses of force. But as you can tell, in many parts of our policy manual, we talk about reporting three, in our use of force, reporting use of force in conducted energy weapon, our TASER policy, we're going to document that in a report. Firearms discharges are documented in the report. And then just our general report preparation, as I mentioned earlier, every incident that we go to, we generate a police report. And in that, we're going to document everything that occurred on that particular incident. This goes on to talk further about reporting and what our officers are required to place inside their documentation in their report. And even further documentation here in further policies. As you can see, everything we do is documented. And then the last thing that I have here is that I've received questions about our body worn camera program. We've had a body worn camera program since 2014. That's when we started our pilot program. And since 2016, all of our officers assigned to patrol wear a body worn camera. And that camera, as you can see at the bottom here, under statute says unless there are exigent circumstances or concerns for the safety of the member or any other person, body worn cameras should be activated whenever the officer has or develops reasonable suspicion or probable cause that an offense has been or will be committed by a person in contact with the member. We essentially record just about every single contact that we have, and that recorded data is uploaded at the end of the officer's shift every day, and that data is kept for at least minimum of 180 days or longer that we have that, that we can go back and we can review. So that concludes the, the presentation that I have this evening. And like I mentioned earlier, most all of the questions, I believe, I was able to answer through that presentation. I do want to mention too, that I received an email from the Lexi Paul Policy company just recently in this last week. And I highlighted one of the statements they made in there that says that Lexi Paul is actively considering the issues raised by #8Can'tWait and Campaign Zero and other groups. And as always, we are carefully reviewing all relevant policies to determine any appropriate changes. So they are aware of those campaigns, and they are reviewing those as we speak to see if there are any changes or updates that they need to make for the agencies who subscribe. With that, if there are any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Again, I know a lot of those questions were generated by council. At this point, I will also mention that the DPSST, the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training, has invited local elected officials to attend three hours of training next week. So I sent that information out to counselors. I've registered for those myself. But that does include an opportunity for us to learn more about the state standards and to ask questions. And those are on issues of sort of what is the basic training, as well as some of the additional requirements that are in place to get certified to even serve as a public safety, as a peace officer, public safety officer in our state. So hopefully, more of us on council will have some time to do that next week and get our chance to actually ask the folks who set the standards by which we need to meet in order to even keep these folks on the job. So continued learning and training, as I've mentioned. At this point, if anybody is on the call and would like to make a comment, public comment, please feel free to type your name in the chat and we will call on you. But while you're thinking of those comments, I will take questions from council members. And I can't see all of you.
Question, Mrs. Mayor.
Byron, Byron, is that you?
That is me, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah.
Steve, what? Thanks for your time and thanks for the information. What process do we have, if any, to assess and help our officers and other staff with perhaps the stress of the job or ongoing maybe mental health issues or stress that builds up and and could possibly bubble over into an incident where a citizen takes the the brunt of such an episode. What, what do you have along those lines, if anything?
Okay, thanks. That's a great question. We have a wellness program, and I think I've spoken about that a little bit with the council. I know that Counselor Carey has indicated a couple of times how important it is that we have a wellness program, and we've done that and done better with that each year. And what we've done there is we have, just off the top of my head, there's three things I can think of. We have a chaplaincy program where we have five, actually five volunteer chaplains that visit with us regularly. And they're volunteers, and there's no requirement for our officers to interact with those chaplains, but they make themselves available so that any officer, if they want to, especially if they want to do it confidentially, they can contact a chaplain and they can talk with that, that chaplain. And that's done without, I don't get that, that information. They don't have to report to me about anything like that. We also have an employee assistance program. Our entire city has that, city staff has that available to them, and they can use that EAP program. Again, that is done confidentially. That's not reported to me or to anyone else if they decide to use that program to get help. This last year, I implemented a new part of our wellness program, and that is that every one of our officers has, has been given the ability to go visit with a police psychologist. And she has a practice up in the Portland metropolitan area where she specializes in dealing with police, I guess, police-related issues for police officers or first responders. And once again, they make, the officer can make that appointment on their own. It's done confidentially. I'm not aware of it, no one else in the department's aware of that happening. They can go visit with that psychologist. And we, the city, actually pays for that initial visit. If they wish to continue in, in that program or to visit with that psychologist, then it kicks into If they wish to continue in in that program or to visit with that psychologist, then it kicks into the use of our insurance so that they can continue to go if they'd like to. So those are, those are three things. And then we're all trained. I'm looking at my supervisors who are up here. You can't see them. But we all go through that same training to be able to recognize hopefully anything that might be happening in the lives of our police officers that might trigger, you know, a stressful situation. And one of the things that we've talked about over the last couple of weeks within our organization is the fact that we have a a small force. We have fourteen sworn. And what I mentioned in my my report here to you is that we see all of our police officers daily. We have three different briefings every day, which we bring them in and we and we are in the same room and we talk with our police officers face to face. And that in that briefing, not only do we go over what's happening and what we're looking for and what we're doing as far as work related stuff, but we also spend a few minutes talking to each one of them on a personal basis in order to make sure they're doing okay, their families are doing okay, their kids are doing okay, things like that. We are a small, tight knit organization. And I mentioned to the city manager a week or so ago when we were talking that it's it's a good thing that if a if a person within our police facility sneezes or hiccups, I I can hear it from my office. And sometimes I feel bad because I got to thinking that maybe we were micromanaging our people just a little bit too much, but I I think really, and I wrote it in my notes tonight, but I had so much I didn't want to be here till midnight, but I did write it in my notes to say that we are so tight knit and we're like a family that it's really hard for any of our officers to be going through anything without one of us knowing about it, but usually most of us do because we're friends outside of work too. So I feel like we're fortunate to have a small agency and be able to take care of one another.
So thank you. So on the on that note, Chief, if you or or any other members of the leadership there see somebody having a hard time, is there is there a process that you can have them go through to to make sure that they're that they're okay to to be at work? So is there some sort of compulsory process saying, look, I know you want to be here, but unfortunately, you know, your behavior is this way. I need you to go get cleared before you can come back. Anything, anything of that nature?
Right. It may not be spelled out exactly, but there you can get to a point for, like I talked about in here a little bit ago about a fitness for duty. If it gets to a point, then we can do that. We can mandate a fitness for duty. It it because they are an association, a union, some of that stuff is negotiated. But I think that in most cases, the officers recognize that they have the need also if we were to come to them and and talk to them about that. And that's, that's one of the reasons why I connected with the police psychologist up in the in the Beaverton area because that's somebody who can sit down and actually do a fitness for duty evaluation for us if we need one.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I see Roxanne.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Talon, for all the information. There's a lot in here that I did not know about. Something that I know that you have done in the past is you've given us specifics on the number of incidents where the the Polk County Mental Health people came along and how many people that they spoke with. And then I know in your annual report, you give us information about how many robberies were investigated and how and the crimes and things like that. And maybe this is more a question for Suzanne or for somebody within the city staff, but it seems like some of the questions that we're getting from people are who's involved in these incidents or, you know, what what types of people? We're talking about racial issues here. So is there a way that that information can be pub put pub somewhere public? The city website, not with naming names, but just to make sure people see what is our balance in terms of the equity of who is having interactions with our police department? Does that make sense?
Kind of.
Okay.
So let's see if I can rephrase that. So you're talking about the annual report and the statistics that we place in that annual report. You're wondering if we can make that public for everyone to take a look at?
Yeah, and I realize it kind of is public, but I don't think people know that it's public, if that makes sense.
Right, yes. And so that's, I did get some questions over the last couple of weeks about asking if those types of of documents can be placed online. And I do want to do that. I I'm not prepared just right now to be able to go go back and do it immediately. But I do, that's a goal of mine to work toward is to getting this information made available on our website so that people can access it. So yeah, it's a goal of ours to do that.
Chief, can can I just ask, so when you make those reports, do you make that as a presentation to the council during a work session?
I have done that in the past, yes.
Okay, so the the report is public document.
Correct, yeah, yes.
So there's, it would be easy for you to post it on the website?
Yes.
Yeah, I think given that it is a public document, but again, some of the feedback I think we're getting is that people don't know how to find things. And so again, perhaps that's a bigger question when we talk about our communication strategy overall as a city. But it seems like I would love somebody to be able to go to the city website and put into a search engine, you know, robbery statistics or, you know, stop statistics and have it take them to that page. So and that's, but that's a future thing and that costs money and time, I know, so.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say is is the difficult thing for us is the time it takes to do all that and having a person to be able to do that.
Making the searchable PDF is one way to do that. And I think that's we can, we can probably work towards that. And I think as Roxanne mentioned, we're looking at a lot of communication practices. That's a great one. Other council questions? Counselor Lopez, I I have to scroll to find y'all, so I'm gonna, I'm just gonna call on you. Counselor Lopez, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, you know, before before I ask my questions, I I would like to say that I, you know, encourage us to view this as a jumping off point into this conversation as opposed to as opposed to the end of the road. I think the national conversation is constantly evolving. And this is an area of great local and state and national interest. So I I encourage us to follow suit with that and see tonight as strictly a beginning. I I thank Chief Talon for the the presentation that was made and and would love to have a copy of this to review. There is certainly a lot of information that that we've been given and it's it's quite a bit to quite a bit to digest. But I understand that it was, you know, it took some energy to put together and and I do thank you for the time and thoughtfulness that 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 it took to do that. Um, you know, I I will say that you you did mention the use of terminology such as should versus shall. And the the nuance in that one is encourage the other is required. I I will say the copies of the use of force policy and the collective bargaining agreement that I've received are are not searchable. So it is very difficult to identify some of those key words that have that have direct meaning in in them. If there are searchable saved copies of this, I I would welcome receiving them. And then to move on to a a couple of questions that I have tonight. We did touch a little bit on training. Do officers specifically receive training regarding implicit bias?
Yes.
And is that is implicit bias considered throughout the hiring process or performance evaluations?
We hope that that comes out in in terms of hiring process. That's why we do the extensive background. And also right after that background is completed is the psychological exam and the psychologists that we use, they take a look at and get a copy of that background first and they go through it page by page and they look at every single thing that was written or talked about within that background so that when they meet with that candidate, they're able to ask those types of questions if they see any kind of warning signs at all. So that's part of the of the hiring process. And then secondly, I lost my train of thought. The other part that you were talking about was hiring and then training.
Evaluation.
Oh, evaluation.
Performance evaluation.
Yes. And so, yes, absolutely, because every employee gets that performance evaluation. And we're, we are supervising and taking notes and watching those individuals throughout that entire year so that when we sit down with them, we're able to bring up our notes that we take throughout the year and bring up, you know, instances or or cases that we can talk about with those employees. And so if we were to see any type of a trend whatsoever, or if there were any complaints coming in, we're going to incorporate that into the evaluation.
And in in your recollection, has has any any issues with regard to implicit bias been 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 addressed actively in performance evaluations in Monmouth?
I can't recall any, at least not in the recent last few years, I can't recall any. I look at every one of those evaluations. The supervisors prepare all of them. I'm involved in in the preparation process. I read them all. And then the supervisors then deliver those evaluations and then I get the final copy back. And after eighteen years of doing that as the chief, and then prior to that I was a sergeant, so I was writing several of those. It's going to be tough for me to remember every single one of them, but off the top of my head, I don't remember anything like that.
Thank you. Um, and then there to 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 move to body cameras, there were a number of a number of pieces in the body camera portions I was trying to take notes on, but I I think I'll have to go and review them. One area, and forgive me if this was covered already, is is there a clear set of disciplinary actions outlined if the use of body cameras is not followed by police?
So we we're going to follow our our disciplinary policy on on any time anyone violates the the code of conduct, our conduct policy or any any one of our other policies. If that if that were to happen, then our disciplinary process would kick in and we would use that disciplinary process for anything. So if it's body cameras or if it's anything else, if they're, if they are, you know, if it's an intentional violation of the policy, we're going to address it.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, and, oh, gosh, I'm trying to go through my my notes here. I I will certainly have some 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 follow up, follow up questions, but one, one comment regarding Lexi pole is is that, you know, while it is, while it is certainly puts me at ease that that we are using something that is, you know, constitutionally valid and continuously updated. Being so widespread does not seem to me to be a particular asset at this at this juncture. These issues that we see throughout the country are widespread. I I did look at Lexi pole's website. I'm not able to find any concrete information on which which police forces are utilizing them or not. They do claim to to be utilized in, for example, ninety-five percent of California's police departments. If we trace that across the nation, these these policies are enacted in some areas where where a lot of this injustice has happened recently. I'll also highlight that, you know, in a in a criticism of Lexi pole by by the Berkeley, California citizen run Police Review Commission, the the head of that commission criticized Lexi pole for designing a program that results in maximum protection against civil liability, not maximum protection of civil rights. I I did did note that you had encouraged or that you had noted that it is encouraged to customize these customize these documents to fit each community. Can you think of any ways that we have customized Lexi pole's on documents specifically in the direction of guaranteeing civil rights and civil liberties?
You mentioned, one of the slides you showed said modified and I was wondering, one of the early ones, and I was wondering if that was one you potentially could I?
I don't know that we've modified any specifically for civil rights. I can't can't think of anything right now off the top of my head. Most of the modifications that we are making are modifications such as, if I go back to maybe using as an example, the mobile crisis response team that Polk County has, we might mention that in our policy because Lexi pole obviously isn't going to put that in in the model policy. And so I might specifically say in in the Monmouth Police Department, if you are responding to a person in crisis, then you should consider requesting the Mobile Crisis Response Team. That's the kind of modification that that I would make and that I would that I I remember doing on some of our our policies, but I don't have any recollection of doing anything in the in the area of modifying it for, I guess, improving civil rights. Yeah, I the civil rights protections. I'm I'm taking those policies from Lexi pole as they are written, if they're federal or state mandates.
I I appreciate that answer. I know that some of these are wonky, wonky questions and I thank you for for, you know, your 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 willingness to admit that that we don't have all the answers tonight. I do look forward to continuing continuing conversation. With that in mind, I'll finish with one final question. One, one area that I I haven't seen a lot of in our in our police department policies or procedures is direct avenues of civilian or resident oversight. Clearly, we, there is oversight through the council and this body. But do you have any any ideas personally of areas, I mean, with the recognition that you know these documents better at this point than any of us, well, do you have any any ideas of areas that we might be able to improve civilian oversight?
I don't right now. I think that, as you mentioned, I've always felt that the council and the mayor and and in our community, we're a tight knit, small community. And as I mentioned earlier, there's not a lot that really can occur here without everybody knowing what every, you know, almost everyone knowing what's going on. And so so in all of my career, which has been here in Monmouth and Independence, I felt like we've done very well with the council oversight with people who are able to reach out to us or reach out to the council with questions or concerns. And I've always had a good relationship with every city manager that I've worked for in in terms of being able to report to the city manager all that's occurring within my department and getting advice and also allowing the city manager then to take any concerns to the council if needed.
And before I call on John Carey, I'll also point out, got a press release today that the governor is calling a special session for June twenty fifth, I believe. that the governor is calling a special session, uh, for June 25th, I believe it was. And the top, one of the topics of that special session is actually policing. So I, I would, I, I believe it would be safe to say that there may be some state guidance coming and particularly with regards to how communities work with their police to make sure that they're properly representing the community and determining what that role is of citizen input. At, at least that's my understanding of what that might mean. So I imagine that that will be addressed on a bigger stage than this.
Yeah, on a statewide level.
On a statewide level.
Probably likely that that is going to be coming.
That's, that's what we're all.
We don't know yet, but.
Right.
But we've all heard.
I think we're all hearing the same thing, that that's potentially what that topic of that special session will be. John, Carey?
Uh, Chief, thank you very much for a very comprehensive and frankly reassuring presentation. Um, I think those of us that have been in the, um, quote unquote oversight role in the police department have, have felt good about your operations and the poli- and, and the, uh, the officers that, uh, and staff, uh, that, that you have, uh, under you and, and they're there for a reason. And, and, uh, a lot of the things you talk about are those reasons. Um, that being said, that there, there's a couple of things that I've learned in this, um, and a couple of observations that I, that I would make. Um, you, you, you referenced the bias-based, uh, policy, uh, leasing policy, you know, which, which really is intended to root out any biases. And Counselor Lopez referenced some of that. Um, however, um, in the, the, there are so many detailed things and legal things that you have to get through. It occurs to me that it's difficult for you to get to, uh, training towards cultural competency. Um, I know ethics are woven into that. I know de-escalation is woven into that. But increasingly, um, I think cultural competency, and that's a buzz term that not everybody likes, but I think everybody understands sort of the meaning. Um, you know, might be a, uh, because I think one of the things you suggested that some officers have taken, have taken, um, you know, cultural awareness courses. I, I reckon that, that that ought to be something that everyone does, uh, but that's, that's my two bits. So, so, and so that's one of my takeaways. And then, and then also, um, you know, the, uh, the use of force, I reviewed your use of force that you reviewed with us tonight very carefully and, and I'm, and you're to be commended for the completeness of it and the, and the currentness of it. Um, it, the, the thing that, that did strike me is, is that, you know, you have a use of force situation, uh, and then the, the supervisor primarily solves it. It may be included in the arrest report, um, but there, i- i- it's all internally done. And, um, where the expertise is and where it probably ought to be done. But, um, in, in the spirit of sort of opening up the lens, uh, there might be instances in a use of force situation where, um, some sort of, uh, citizen involvement with that. I would not propose a citizen review board. Those are not always successful and some, sometimes they're a problem. But, you know, I wonder if there's not a way, uh, to do that at certain levels. Um, th- those are our, sort of our things. Um, the, the thing, the other take-home message that I had, and I would pass this on to my counselors, um, in another year when we review and approve the, uh, collective bargaining agreement with, um, uh, Monmouth PD, I think we need to focus on more than just, um, you know, salary and benefits and, and all of those kinds of things which are, are very important. But, um, there's some other things in the, in the discipline area that I think, uh, would be worth, um, a consideration of. There's a lot of concerns around the country and I, we don't have any, or very few of the concerns that other parts of the country have. But, uh, uh, about, uh, record-keeping on, on misbehavior of officers and that sort of thing. I've got some, a little bit of heartburn on some of the things in the collective bargaining agreement, but, uh, I'll just make a note, a tickle file, that we need to, uh, pay more attention to some of those things when those are negotiated. And then finally, and I'll get off, um, you referenced the, uh, Polk County, um, intentional deadly force policies and so forth. Um, that is due for review. That is to be reviewed biannually. And the last time we looked at that was in 2017. And so, um, I, I, I think that, um, that we ought to review that. Um, I, I find it odd that the union representative is notify, in a, in a case of deadly force, the union representative is, I, is, is notified before the district attorney. Um, you know, turn and I have it too, that there's a 40 hour, 48-hour waiting period before there's actually an, in, a formal interview with the, with the officer that was involved. And I know there's reasons for that. Um, but I, I, I think that it's worth discussing. And then, well, it, and you said that, that we do, it, the policy recommends, uh, and there's some of that language, but it recommends the use of an outside agency to review this. It doesn't require it. And, um, a- as a matter of fact, it specifies that if the internal review is conducted by the, sort of the home agency, uh, then there's only a requirement of one officer from another agency to participate in that review. And there's no citizen involvement with anything like that. I just think that there are no members of the public involved. And so I think that, um, it, it would just slay better. Th- th- that's not all our document, I understand. But when we review that, I think that's a discussion that, that, uh, that we ought to have. None of that is intended to be a criticism. It's more an observation. And, um, I, I feel a lot better and will sleep better tonight after your presentation. Very nice job.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, John. Other questions for the chief? Um, I'm looking at the public comment section and there were, there was a question there and we'd sort of mentioned we weren't going to actually entertain questions, but rather just comments, um, from Rebecca Salinas Oliveros. And it, I think some of this may have been answered earlier in the presentation as well. So, um, I'm gonna ask Chief to respond to her individually, just to make sure she, if she missed the beginning of the presentation.
Sure.
And I happen to have her contact information, perhaps others do as well. But, um, any other public comments that I can't see, Phyllis?
Madam, uh, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, in the, in the, uh, um, case of the comment that was previously asked, um, I'm not able to even see what the, uh, what the question was in the, um, you know, in the, uh, um, effort of transparency since it was, since it was referenced, if you could share that?
It came to me directly. It was asking questions about the, um, cultural diversity and ethics training and how much officers receive. So it was covered earlier in the presentation. So, just wanna make sure we get that directly to her. I'm sorry, Phyllis, so you said, would there was something else?
No, there were no other comments that, that I saw unless she, unless you were directed at someone else.
That's, that's the only one directed at me, I believe. So we'll get that answer. Um, and we, uh, you mentioned, um, a couple, I, I guess one other thing I wanted to ask about was what, do we have a formal complaint process if a citizen brings a complaint?
Yes. And our policy actually says that any complaint that comes in, we're going to investigate. But we do have a formal complaint process that they can actually fill out a form for. But some people are reluctant to come in and reluctant to even fill out a form. So we'll take the complaint if it's over the phone or by email or, or some other, just verbally. Uh, our policy states that we'll look into all complaints.
Okay. And I know, again, from prior experience, that the people do let us know if they feel their concerns and we have addressed questions at times. And so, that, that is what we are here for. Um, and, and as I say, I, I imagine we'll be getting more direct state guidance. Um, part of the conversation that Mayor McArdle and I want to have with the folks that we are convening is, is obviously about, uh, perceptions of public safety in our community, but also about other issues. And, um, we hope to be able to have some pretty frank discussions, to hear the stories, uh, to understand the experience. But I, I think we, we all know, and I, I won't put you on the spot or maybe Janet, but do we know how many of our officers live in, at least in Monmouth Independence in the community?
So, I'm looking up at Lieutenant Haynes because I, I asked him to prepare some of this information just in case I get asked. And of course, my computer died and ran out of battery and, uh, so I don't have it readily.
I think it's 11. Currently, we have, uh, 13 employed officers. And out of those 13 employed officers, 11 at least live locally in Monmouth Independence, West Salem. And then we have two that live.
So I don't know if you were able to hear that. So, right now we have 13 sworn officers. Um, we have the one vacancy, so our 14th position's not, uh, filled yet. And of those 13, 11 live locally, Monmouth Independence, um, and I think one in West Salem. And then two others live a little bit further out than, than that. So a majority, a good majority of them do live in Monmouth Independence. Um, and as I said, I had a lot more, but I knew that, that this was gonna be a lot that I already had. And, and, uh, but I did want to include some of that information that, that our officers live here, they work here, their spouses work here in this community, their children go to school here, they shop at the same stores as everybody else here. They are as much a part of this community as anyone else is. And they are very, very embedded and they're committed to this community. And, uh, so I, I can't say enough about them. And, uh, we have actually three officers now that are homegrown, born, raised and gone through central high school and, uh, through either Western Oregon University or Schumecata Community College. So, uh, we have some, we have some people who are very compassionate and very caring about the Monmouth Independence community.
And, and can I ask, do we have bilingual, bicultural office, officers?
Yes, we do. We have two bilingual and two bicultural.
And that's both bicultural Spanish and Spanish.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Those were mine.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, and thank you all of, again, you guys can't see them because they're up in our normal seats back there. Uh, but thank you, um, for all four of them that came tonight to sit and listen. Because again, and I saw them taking a lot of notes, um, that these are continuing conversations, as you say, we'll be able to have. Um, and make sure that we are responsive, that we are flexible and changing because this, this does change. And, um, the chief and I actually have had a conversation about what kind of metrics should we be actually taking, right? The, the report, the annual report lists arrests, it lists robberies, it lists per- property crimes, personal crimes. Um, though, but what are the right statistics and what will tell us, what will give us as the policymakers, but also our community, the faith that they need, the consent, um, of the, the consent of the governed, right? How do we make sure that we are measuring the things that are important? And what are those metrics? And then how do we collect them? And I think that's gonna be a very interesting conversation we can, we can have as well. So.
Thank you, Your Honor. That's what I was trying to get to with my earlier question, but you said it much more articulately than I did. So thank you.
I've had a lot of time to prepare. All right. Um, unless there's any additional business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting this evening.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, Counselor. And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. And we will not meet again this month. So I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate, um, Christopher Lopez and his fiancee, Sarah Trish. Uh, at our next meeting, he'll be a married man, if he gets his hair cut. And I'm thinking of getting rid of the facial stuff.
Oh, God, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We're, we're very happy for you. And I'm, I'm certain that although it is not the ceremony you had hoped and planned, it's going to be a wonderful celebration of the two of you. And so congratulations from us. And we are adjourned.